Yeah, there. From what?
Okay, we're starting the tape here, at least materially.
Do you have an agenda down there?
We have multiple agendas down there. You can pass them around or pass them down. There's only two things on it, so it's not.
Well, I'm okay with the first one, then I get, you know, second one gets a little bit of a lack of agenda. They're free to. You ready to roll?
Of course they locked us in here.
Yes. Still open though, a little bit. Somebody could hear through that crap.
I'll open it and see if there's anybody else there. I expect Tuesday in August is not really time to go back to town.
Okay. Alright, so then welcome everyone. This is the, a specialty of the Online Zoning Commission. Today being August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the table this evening. Starting over at Jane March, her secretary Denise Savage-O, our member, full-time member. Michael Obriano as alternate. We have Amy Watt, our documenter. I saw Paul Orizawa, should have put myself last. Sorry, vice chair, um, she's Louise. Mike, Mike Miller. But I've got Mary Gardner Coco, another option. I got that one down. Mary, Mary Joe Nozel, our land use coordinator, Eric Knapp, and the esteemed Attorney Matt Willis.
Esteemed today? That doesn't happen too much.
Attorney Matt, Mary Willis.
Are you feeling esteemed?
I am now.
Okay, so first order of business then is to take a motion that we go into executive session for discussion of pending litigation. Some of, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, opposed, abstained? Okay.
We inviting everybody in?
Executive session, no decisions were made and no documentation was made. Motion.
Second or fourth?
Yes. Number one, number two. Second by Mike Miller, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose that same. Thank you, Attorney Willis.
Thank you.
Stop down and sit in the courtroom. Your local court.
Oh, great. Thanks guys, be good. Take care.
Thank you. Now we go into the second main event.
The other team would like to observe.
Yep.
I told them they could come in throughout because I could decide.
So we'll go into the zoning regulations rewrite workshop. On the left, we have all of our principal use tables that we were going to go through. And we're going to actually address these land and my land.
Is that the proposed approach we're going to take?
I think it's what you said we were going to do, not what the approach is we can talk about. So the floor is open.
So I, I have a want to revisit something that we discussed earlier. Not, I mean about the land use, but since we're kind of in the more this workshop format now, which I'm really glad that we're, we're doing. And I spent a lot of time really going through all of this, and we have an enormous project ahead of us. And so this is probably going to be, I imagine, the first of many such workshops. And so as I'm trying to think gaming this out, going forward of how we're going to do this, you know, I think there is some value in coming up with a plan. And, and you know, having some kind of consensus of how we are going to work our way through what is a significant development for the town. And, you know, for the, all of the boards and commissions. You know, this really, at its heart, if you, if you kind of pull the thread all the way, this is a planning exercise. This is a land and, and use planning exercise that strategically speaking, it's kind of that everything's going to flow from. And then these are just the regulations of how we're going to implement it. And when I look at it from that kind of a perspective, and I look at all the stakeholders that we are going to invite into this discussion, I think is, is appropriate. And my background in, in how you pull together consensus on something as significant as a strategic plan for an entire town with a myriad of stakeholders. The sooner that we amongst ourselves come together with a consensus for how we're going to approach it in a transparent, in a countable, and effective, and efficient, because it is, you know, it's not our full-time job, way. And then communicate that out, I think, sets us up for a much higher degree of success than if we, kind of how we've been doing it up until now, which there's a number of very good and valid reasons for why it's proceeded as it has. But where, you know, it's been kind of just a one piece of an agenda item on some other issues and, or, you know, on, on regular session meetings and such. And then we're saying, okay, we're going to have a workshop, but we haven't really planned in advance how we're going to use this time together. It's very open-ended. And so from my perspective, I would just like to offer, you know, I think that, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I guess I'm just looking at, are you talking about when we get into step two? Which is?
Well, I'm saying that's a really good point. So that's why actually, so the three things that I think, you know, as we pick this apart, starting from tonight, part of this workshop, we should be, one, what is the objective? Like, let's agree what the objective of this technical review is, right? This is not necessarily a time to go into substantive discussions. Because a couple of times in our technical review discussions, we've gotten kind of off on tangents about substantive issues which are valid, but which need to be part. We can identify them, but they need to be parked and put aside. So one, agree that, that this is just what the technical review is. But then we also consider like coming up with a project plan, starting now. Of which the technical review is a piece of that, right? And that would have a project timeline. So that's where we would potentially at least talk about what needs to be done in phase two, right? So this is our objective. This is our endpoint. At the very, very end, we want to have updated regulations. So working our way all the way back, what are all the things that need to happen? And how are we going to address that and come up with a timeline to? It could be notional to an extent, but to kind of break this out into chunks. And then as a part of that, have a communication strategy. So that we're communicating out to everybody that needs to know this. And that is going to be coming to us understandably, communicating out how, what, what it is that we're, we're going to do. And part of that communication strategy should be, you know, identifying what, what is our schedule of communications? And who needs to know what, when? And then I think, actually, you know, kind of to Mike's point about earlier about needing a, a talking stick. I mean, to establish like what are our rules of engagement? Both for internally as a group, how are we going to discuss this in the course of whether it be workshops? Or when emails go out, what can and cannot go in, in the emails and such. But then how, you know, how do we want to, sorry, I'm in my classes to read my own notes. But how do we want to elicit input from stakeholders? And then how do we want to even identify what those different stakeholders are, right? Because it's more than even just the other boards and commissions. And so, you know, in my mind, these are, it's very process oriented, I get it. I think for an undertaking of this significance, there is value in identifying the, a process for how we want to approach it. So I, I just want to put that out there for the, for the group's consideration.
I think there's a lot of very valid things to say there. Thank you.
So there's, there's two pieces to this, as you're, you're well aware, okay? So the first piece is not changing anything in what we have here right now.
Correct.
It's just the reorganization of it. That's a separate project plan.
Well, we could have one project plan that has that.
You could, but you could have, you'd have two specific areas of. Then there's the second phase.
Yep.
Which really has a lot more of the interaction.
A hundred percent, yes.
That's where that is. And that's probably going to be more time consuming.
I, I agree.
Because we work, we listen, we go back until everything comes out, revenue.
I agree.
So we have that project schedule from FHI.
Yep.
Right. I think your proposing needs to be fleshed out.
Yeah, because we've already, we've already blown.
That's FHI's plan, which is good, because we can take that, look at those gates, and back up the gates that we would need in order to comply with that.
But to, Paul, to, to, yes, I understand that there, that it's two separate things. And we already, I think, agreed that, and, but maybe we haven't, I don't know. But the technical review is, is, we're going to complete that internally before we push anything out. But we're not doing this in a vacuum. Other boards and commissions, other members of the community, by virtue of the fact that we have members of the community here, know that this is happening. And so there is also value in making sure that we are transparent with all of this broader community about what's going on. Even if that's why I, I sent you guys them out. Even if it's just a simple explaining to people that there's two pieces. And the reason you're not hearing from us right now is because it's just technical. We're literally moving things around and updating it to comply. That sounds basic, but people don't know that that's happening. And we've received, which board was it, Eric, that sent us unsolicited?
The game where, like, the game where.
Both the twenty-fourth appeals and a fairly detailed list of what they were in, Chris, like, the same way.
Yeah, so people are. Yeah, and I think this is good. And so people are going to start giving us information. So if we have a process for how we elicit input, so we can have it potentially in a structured format that makes it easier for us to just organize it and, and, you know, it's, we can compare it or like, like, what have you. But also communicates clearly to them that you, you know, if you want to send us things now, that's fine. We aren't looking at it until we get to phase two or what have you. But I, you know, I think all of this is to be.
And I think you were going to impose something, right?
And I did, I sent it out, yeah.
We talked about that last time, and Eric was going to do that.
But she did it.
No, I did it. I sent it out to everybody.
And I thought, I agree.
For him, yeah.
I, I have not sent it out to boards and commissions yet, because I guess.
No, 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 because you, we need to agree internally. And that, that's not the first thing I said is like, we, like, this is a process. But I think it's a process that we as a group need to agree to. And rather than doing in an ad hoc, we'll do this memo here or this piece here, there could be value in developing this whole process at once and communicating to everybody that's going to be very, very interested. This is going to, we're going to be in our maximizing class, appropriately so. And so I, I think it just, again, having just watched what happened with the Hall's Road overlay, and I'm not comparing it, and I'm not saying they, I'm not, no comment on how they did or did not handle it. But we already know that there is going to be significant interest in this. And so we serve our town by getting out in front of what we know is going to be a tremendous interest.
I, I do agree. We, we need significant more public input when it comes to the revisions of these regulations, right?
Yes.
Because we're here to serve the community.
Yep.
And I think that the community doesn't have a clue.
Correct.
So I agree, there needs to be, it should be on Facebook. It should be marketed to the community in any way possible to get the engagement that I don't think we're personally getting. And, but when you said part section one, as far as the, the discussions, there, I just want to note on that is that even though we're updating them, we've also introduced a bunch of new definitions. So this section one is also needs that scrutiny
Yes.
from the public and the other commissions, I feel. Because in doing, in the update, we're going from each zone being identified, right? To now a use chart, and we don't know what's going to get lost in translation. But with all the new definitions, that's creating more regulatory framework for existing things right now. I don't know if anyone feels the same about that, but.
So can I, I'm gonna give you my.
Yeah.
So I've been through a regulation rewrite before.
I'm sure, a couple.
I don't think anybody else in the room did it. And it took years.
I believe it.
And I've actually been through two regulation rewrites. Because the first time I was on the zoning commission was right when they were doing a regulation rewrite. And the planning commission was upset about how long Elton Smith was taking doing the right, right, regulation rewrite. But then we did another one with, uh, Willis is.
My grudge.
Yep. And the process on that, this commission is hired for a purpose, hired by the voters. It's our job to, I mean, we have a set of regs that has been sweated over, don't worry,
Yep.
for many, many, many decades.
Yep.
The townspeople are not necessarily unhappy with what we have. So we do have to do some stuff because statutes have changed. But this isn't a free-for-all where everybody in town comes in and says, okay, well, we're in at this, and we want this. Our job is to filter that first. And we filter it with what we, our vision is. And maybe we don't have complete agreement around the table about what the vision is. But it's our job to filter it first. So yes, you put things out there and you entertain what people have to think about and bring it in. But the other two times this has been done, it is much further along than anything like this. This has the new ideas in it, if there's going to be any, before you first hand it out to the public. Because otherwise, it, it's not, this isn't a, that everybody in town is writing the zoning regulations. It's the zoning commission that's writing the regs. There's a whole lot of different levels of experience here, a whole lot of different sort of viewpoints here. But it's among us that we're supposed to flesh this out and come up with what we think is a good idea. Then, as, as a more complete project, it starts going out in a more complete way. Because otherwise, I think you get chaos.
I agree. That's exactly what I'm talking about, Jane. And so I appreciate you, you explaining your experience with this and such. And so to be clear, I'm just saying we, for lack of a better word, put that in writing, exactly what we're going to do, when we are going to elicit input and when we're not.
Yep.
And, and internally agree what that looks like and, and when that is. And I think there's some, I mean, yes, okay, we can have a shared understanding. But until it's like written down and we're, we're all saying, this is what the process is going to be, then we're all, that's going to set us off on a stronger start. Because we'll all say, okay, yes, this is, this is what we say. So to be clear, when I'm saying, oh, you know, we're, we're going to be getting scrutinized, I'm not saying that we need to open, invite everybody in to help us rewrite their regulations. I do know from experience, much, much harder problem sets than this, that if we don't communicate early and often what we're doing, it's going to make things more difficult for us regardless if people have the right to be participating in the discussion.
Well, I'm not, I'm saying they do have a right, but you don't want to give them unfinished products.
No.
Right.
Yeah, I see you correcting on that. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying give them the product. I'm saying tell them what we're doing, which is why the memo that I gave to the process. And that's why the memo that I sent to our group did not go, give them a product. It literally just said, this is why we're doing this, because we have been instructed to. This is step one, this is step two, this is when we're going to accept, you know, input. And that, that was it. It was pretty straightforward if you, if you had a chance to read it.
Right. Yes, I did. So, so when we did it with Mark Brants, and you used to come to those meetings too, so we had the two of them. He'd come with his computer, and he'd have with his laptop, and we took it section by section.
Yep.
That worked very well, because it was educating the commission also as to what it is our regulations say.
Yeah.
And he being a lawyer was very good at wordsmithing, and he'd be wordsmithing right on the spot. And he typed really fast. But, so he would give us a section, already done. We'd all look at it. We'd say, ah, we don't like this, we like that, whatever. And he would take that input and then come back with that section done, revised. And then we'd look at it again. But it was the entire section, so it wasn't, you know, so we didn't, don't, and that, do you remember? So it was all of section one and all of section two and all of section.
As Jane pointed out, it took years.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, having been a partner in that law firm at the time, that we lost a ton of money on it because Mark Flatrate did it, and we went well over budget on it. Obviously, you know, lost our shirt financially on it.
He still liked us, though.
When they were here.
But I mean, I, I, I agree with everything you're saying on this. And I guess, and I think, so like, let's, I can sort of give you some very basic thoughts as to where I was thinking on this and see how they mesh up with all the rest of it. First, we should probably go back to what you drafted and say, is this a product you would like me to make public to other boards and commissions and the public and get it up on the website? Having a chance to review what Mary Gardner did, does anybody here have comments about it? Or do we think that it's ready to be published?
It's not ready to be published. I'll tell you that right now. It was meant very much to spark discussion, not, not to.
That's, that's pretty important, to sort of make sure we know where we are with it.
Yes.
On the issue of sort of public input, for lack of a better sense of this, I was thinking, and again, this is just my back office thinking here, that we would be having three public sessions next year geared at different audiences. One would be sort of a charrette for other boards and commissions. One would be during the summer, a charrette for the shoreline area. And the third would be a charrette for the business community. There's only two that are in the FHI here, but I mean, we can have as many as we want. It's just the only budgeted for two. But those were sort of my thoughts as to how to, how to bring in different sets of the community to, to go over things. That may be a terrible idea, but that, in my own mind, how I was thinking that we were going to sort of roll this out and, and talk to the public.
Everybody familiar with a charrette, what that is?
No.
Okay, it, it's just basically a planning session like we're having tonight, where you usually have facilitator, and then again, you sort of come in with a proposal and you sort of solicit input from the public about the proposal. And then the commission will take the input and goes back and thinks about what was said. And again, my theory, I think it was just a theory, was we would probably have to do this on like a Saturday morning or something. And we would have it in the main room down there, and we'd have some food. And we would schedule it from nine to twelve. And again, have facilitator that knows what you're doing, because I certainly don't, to make this all happen properly. And again, the, I thought it was important to break these into pieces so that you had different groups at different times. So you were not just getting this whole bombardment of everybody with different ideas. So, yeah.
But when the, one with the boards and commissions, so we would only engage with the other boards and commissions once?
Well, at the, on the charrette level, yes. But I think that they're certainly free to give us more thoughts. I mean, some of them already have, as you know.
And, and having spoken informally with, with some of them, they're, they're planning on. They're basically waiting for us to say.
Absolutely.
This is when you can come and present to us what is important to your commission. And so they're already planning and thinking about it. So it's just a matter of how do we want to receive that.
And then because of the communication plan would come in, so we don't have to have this all solved
Yeah.
to go out and communicate. We can start setting expectations that the first phase is going to be running for the next several months. And we're going to clean up with the existing regulations and, and build a platform to do the next phase on. And then in the next year, we're going to have more opportunities for other boards and commissions and the public and the business community and the shoreline to engage.
Basically, what, what I said.
Yeah.
Tweak it a little bit, perhaps.
Tight as we can say.
And then we can refine it as.
And update it, because we should be updating the, the, everybody about what progress we are making.
And the last meeting, the planning commission requested that I show them this version of the reg. So I gave them the link on the website to it, we're looking at tonight, so that they could go and think about it. So as you said, people are already thinking about it. We just gave us a communications plan so that they regularize how people are thinking.
Yes.
And everybody's on, literally, on the same page.
And since we have the internet and websites and all that, we can do something that was never possible in the previous rewrite, which is posted.
Right.
And it's either wrong or not such raw form.
Which we should, right. And, and that's the transparency and accountability. We have to be careful.
You have to be careful with drafts.
You have to be careful.
With drafts, but that's part of the transparency and accountability piece. And precisely because of the internet and social media, stuff's going to be, there's going to be all kinds of things going on about it on the town.
The way that these shrettes work best is if we work on a regulation, a specific regulation, okay? We rewrite it. The next section basically is what's different.
Yeah.
Okay? And the third thing is what's changed, and it's your input.
Yeah.
Because then they see the whole picture up front of them. This is what it was, okay? Here's this, here's what's new.
Yeah.
Okay, here's what's changing. Now what, what do you think?
Yeah.
Because you have to control their thinking. I mean, not really control their thinking, but keep them on the, on the path.
Yeah.
Structure, thing, right. And if you give them the bullets of where, how high level this is, they can move down that path very easily.
Agreed. Yeah, I like that.
But I mean, that's, that's later on, but doesn't mean we can't.
Preview it.
I mean, that's, that's, that's more mechanical than it is.
But we can preview it.
Yeah.
And start to set an expectation so people know what's coming.
Right.
And know that they're on to that right now.
Here's what you can expect to see.
Yeah. So would, would the commission members be happy if it was done that way, section by section?
That would take years.
Well, okay, three sections by three sections, you know, but.
To your point, I, I like that you said that, what, what are we trying to accomplish in the phase two? Where it's not like it's really broken.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm sure there's changes that we want to make or need to make, like you said, that's required. But I think that as being on the receiving end, as me and my neighbors and several other people, you know, on the receiving end of a regulation rewrite, we were unintended consequences. My, I'm, I'm gearing on the side of caution of unintended consequences. I want to make sure that, like you said, bringing the business owners in and people who use and occupy these properties and their property, and their bundle of rights that go with it, making sure we're not modifying or changing it too much to where, for zoning out our businesses out of business.
So I think that makes sense to, to your question, to break it up into sections. I think that, I think it's very efficient, yeah.
It doesn't have to be one at a time, but it has to be.
Right. It could be a group.
Because some of them are, are more dense than others.
And there may be some where we know we need new regulations.
And we may not be changing some. There may actually.
Parts, yeah.
Right, there may be things, maybe.
Right, that's important.
No, I mean, that's a, to your point, like, like, I, I did, I went through and read the whole thing. And, I mean, there's a lot that I think.
Should stay.
Should stay, or, or it's, it's. And that's, that's a good thing to communicate out as well.
Yeah, so if you think about his description of what you put on there, you'd have a whole section, but there aren't, might only be ten sentences or ten.
And it's, and it could be as simple as, because the laws change, so we have no choice.
And we have to show that to them.
Yeah.
Because they're not going to read this and understand it.
No, they're not.
We're going to have to show them what it really means. And then, I mean, I've done that a hundred and fifty times, thousand times, and it works just perfectly.
Is there, is there?
You, you expect a certain level of unfamiliarity.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be. And that's where, being commissioners, you have to take in that slack
Yep.
and realize that some of the comments you'll get are unfamiliarity, not knowing why we put it that way the first time.
Yep.
And, and get past that.
Is there a, a mission statement, I guess, for phase two? Like, is there, what was the objective of the zoning rewrite?
Make you happy.
I think we should have, no, I love the idea. I think we should have a mission statement for the whole process.
I mean, I don't know how it really came to be that we started to revise and update the zoning regs. So I guess maybe clarification on how we got to that.
So I think, I tried to recreate that in the, in the little document thing that I put together, right? And so that's why I said this is not ready for publication, because like, as I said, I tried to recreate it. So I don't know if there would be more. But, you know, this is something that, that was the board of selectmen that said. But, um, you know, this is something that, that, was the board of selectmen that said, brought it to the attention of the zoning commission?
No, I think we did.
Or we brought it out to our own attention?
We do.
You're right.
There were certain things that would come up and we'd say, are we going to do this now? Um, you know, piecemeal, or are we going to do a comprehensive?
And when was the, and, and the last time, we had, when was the last time a comprehensive re, the view of it was even done?
Oh seven.
I have to lose a little money.
It was March, it was adopted March of oh seven.
It was before you got right here.
Well, that was, that was when it was adopted, right, so when did they start it?
Probably way earlier than that.
Right? So it's, we could easily say twenty years.
Clearly twenty years, yes, because it was a three-year process.
Yeah.
For, for a comprehensive?
That was a pretty comprehensive, because they redo the flood, the zone maps, they rezone commercial or residential and stuff like that.
And I was working with Mark at the time, which started in two thousand, so it had to be after that that you did this.
He was a newbie.
Two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight.
It was adopted in two thousand eight.
He cut his teeth on this.
March seven, two thousand.
March seven, two thousand, that's official.
So it began presumably earlier than.
Oh yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, it was a, it was a, a years-long process.
Yeah.
Um, so.
The first page of the, of the current regulations, I think.
Yeah, what's the date on it? Is it March?
March seven, two thousand eight.
March seven.
Yeah, hey, I was off here, okay.
Mime and it's still trapped.
Okay.
It's, I said you have a mime, like it's still trapped.
No, it's just because I, it, it rezone my property, commercial residential.
Um, and back to sort of, I've been talking even further, it is now about seven thirty, do we have a plan for the rest of this evening? Um, so I, I don't know how late it is.
Meeting's until nine, so. I think, you know, I, I think the process of this is good. I really would like to, we, we've got something in draft, either have staff tweak it and we look at it with it in our hands at the next meeting. So that we know we're going to be talking about that at that meeting, I was ready to work on this. And I appreciate what you're doing, but I thought we would specifically say we're going to work on just the, the.
We can do that.
The line by line and then, because I was thinking at a regular meeting, we could then say, so that's the, the, the piece.
Could I propose that?
And, and I would say a subcommittee, either tweak it and bring it to us so that we vote on, okay, yes, this is what we want to do out or, because otherwise we're talking in circles.
I, I was going to say, why don't we work on the workshop part for an hour and then for the last half hour, work on the memo? And then you can go back and get for our next meeting, so I was going to propose that. We give, give Mary some feedback tonight, because she did this about a month ago, as I recall.
Right, yeah.
And she deserves some feedback.
Well, we all want vacations, so.
Well, I, you know.
Totally fine, so I, I agree with you Denise, I didn't want to put any more work into it though, until I had some understanding, something I knew I wanted.
Yeah, no way to go.
Yeah. Well.
I mean, I, I, I'm supportive of it, I just think that we, we just spent an hour on it.
So, so I, she deserves, so she deserves some time.
I, I, I'm, I think that's fine, because I agree, I'm also ready to, as you said Denise, to kind of go into it. So I, and it, I think we would just all feel good if we could like make some progress in this technical area.
I have a counter proposal.
Yeah.
That we work the draft first for thirty minutes and then go into this for the next hour. I mean, six of one, half of another.
Yeah, we're already on a discussion, that's.
We're already on.
That's fine.
To kind of get that draft ready so that.
Staff, Denise.
My, my concern would be, to Denise's point, that we've already spent an hour on it. I think that there shouldn't be a rush in any of this. Um, that's just my personal opinion, like, we're going to have discussions, there's a lot of individuals, a lot of personalities here. Excuse me, um, there's a lot of people and a lot of mixed feelings and how these things are going to proceed, right? So this dialogue is going to, it's going to be here whether we like it or not, so I, I don't see the need to rush always. Which I feel like sometimes when we discuss things, that tends to happen.
So we got two proposals, I mean, are we prepared to do the letter first? Are we more prepared to go through line by line first and then do that? I mean, I'm open either way, whatever we're prepared for in our minds to do.
Let, let me ask you guys this, one thing, um, so I, I've, I've absorbed a lot and I'm, I'm happy to take that back. And not just write, work on this memo, but also maybe put some, um, structure around this other aspect that we discussed and push it back out. What, if I send an email to the whole group, right, are you guys allowed to provide feedback by email? So this is, this is the, the issue, so in terms of, right.
Yeah, you can send it to him.
Well.
But, but in terms of getting the people to comment back now to it.
We have, we have to get comments in.
It all comes through me, we have four divisions.
So, okay, so that's good, so, but if people are willing to commit to outside of the meeting, I will send something to Eric. And everybody look at it and provide their comments back to Eric, and then what happens if Eric can push back?
Yeah.
Something? Um, if people are willing to have that back and forth by email.
Is there a Google Doc thing you can do or no, it has to go?
I mean, if you want to do, that's fine, you can all send things back to me, in Google Docs, whatever, or for like to one of you.
Yeah.
But the point is, you can't be communicating with each other.
Right.
Right, yeah.
I was just going to say that that's, that's extremely important.
Exactly.
Sure.
That there's no inter-member communication, it's from us to Eric and Eric back out to us.
To Eric, that. That.
And the comments should be limited to mechanics.
Yes.
And not, I'm not, substance opinions.
Substance. Yep, and so what we're talking about is process here, so if people are amenable to commenting on a process. I agree, Michael, we don't need to rush it, but I think we've got enough to work with to put something down on paper, we don't need to do it in real time. I can take that back and people can comment on it and we can move forward with starting to like get into a substantive discussion.
Okay, that sounds like the plan, everybody okay with the plan?
Thank you, Mary.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are you agreeable with that Denise?
Yeah, I was just thinking, I think it's really important for you to work with Eric on the revision. Because he knows what he needs to do with our consultants.
Yeah.
From a process perspective, so I think working with him and you guys have a draft that you get out to us, then we can work on.
I like that.
Because I think you just doing it and sending it out, I think it kind of puts Eric in a bad spot in terms of.
It is.
No, I, I appreciate that, yeah, no, if, if.
So I think he knows what he needs to do and.
I don't want to create more work for you Eric, but if you're going with that.
Well, we have contract dates as well, so that's, that's important.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's really important that Eric be, that, you know.
Okay.
Theoretically, last week, we were supposed to have a conference call with the consultant about how, how much progress we've made on the wiring rig. And I said, yeah, we're going to get into that.
Okay, let's show them how we can do it folks.
Yeah, I, thank you Denise, I appreciate that.
So it seems to me like the big things were the red, the article theories in red, the definitions, the, uh, subsequent changes of state statutes that were in the draft. For, that was a priority for us to review.
The use tables will apparently.
And then the use tables.
I, I was under the impression that I was looking at the use tables tonight, but if you want to start someplace else, we can start somewhere.
Yeah.
No, I would, that's, I'm saying, it seems to me that's what we discussed over the big issues when, uh, the guy was here.
Yes. Uh, and it was noted by Craig or all people that, um, you know, existing C ten, this still has gas stations in it. So when we're going through, we need to make sure we take out gas stations from C ten, even though we took them out from C thirty already. So, um, yeah, that was obviously inadvertent here, but now that we're updating the use table, we're going to make sure that we, that it can just be going forward here. Not that there's, I don't think any real risk that they're going to put used gas stations in C ten, but the goal was to take it out of the regulations entirely. So we're going to make sure that gets done in this round of updates here.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, so are we on section five here, is that where we are?
Section five, principally use summary tables, yes. How do we want to hold this? Line by line, obviously, clearly.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to, to, to.
So, does everybody want adult entertainment in C ten and C thirty?
I mean, you're already commercial, so you start with residential or you work your way down?
Okay, next time I'll bring one for you.
So, we do this, we've done it in previous town I, I've worked in and we just, if someone just says alternative energy systems and he changes, just read, read. It's like, and if nothing, if nothing, you just go through boom, 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 because otherwise it's like, instead of saying next line, next line, just say alternative energy system.
I, I will take that responsibility any year.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, so.
And we know that, just one more thing, we know that ZP is zoning permit, okay? SD, uh, SDP is a special development plan and.
Site, site.
On site, I'm sorry.
But you go on site.
SP is special permit and then a dash is not, not applicable to that zone, okay? We good here folks? Okay, so, alternative energy systems. Good?
Mm-hmm.
Cemetery. Club.
Necessary, I guess.
Uh, commercial catering. Yes, no?
I'm sorry, no, I'm just looking.
Okay, commercial cutting.
I guess, what's the definition of commercial cutting?
Well, there is a definition, actually, yes. Definition section, which is, um, one eighty-six, no, one, sorry, um, one ninety-five, one ninety-five.
C section fifteen to one.
Okay.
Commercial cutting, fifteen point two.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, anybody else?
Question.
Sure.
Uh, I didn't see a definition for non-commercial cutting. It's on.
It's, it's fifteen to two, right?
Yeah, but in the list of definitions, I didn't see it.
Well, it's, it's right above, it's fifteen to one, right? Non-commercial, it's, it's fifteen to one as a definition right here.
Yeah, I know, but back, back in the definitions, do we need one there too?
Do you, okay, if you want to make sure that it's.
I'm just asking.
I see it here, uh, wait, everyone has fifteen to two.
What she's saying is in the actual definitions section, we don't list that as a separate definition that says C section fifteen to one.
I got you.
So do we want to go back and ask Francisco to do that?
I think it exists.
Okay. Okay, now we'll talk to him about making that happen.
Can I ask the wording on that, did it change?
It should not have changed. Commercial cutting should be site plan on every residential zone we have.
Okay, thank you.
Commercial cannula. Commercial livery, boarding stables and riding academies.
That's the one.
Yeah, okay, um, more than six horses shall acquire a special permit.
Down at the bottom.
Okay, down at the bottom, okay, so, under six horses is site plan, over six horses is a special permit. Commercial nursery. Community residence. Convalescent home. Farm. Golf course.
We don't have any convalescent homes, do we?
No.
I don't think we have any, but I mean, that's why we have a permit to allow them to go in, a special permit if they want to come in.
Um, does everybody think that a, um, convalescent home should go in some of the tiny zones? Or should there be a dash there? Convalescent home is a pretty significant, um, use, a lot of activity, et cetera. This is talking about residential zones, I'm going to put that in the parking lot for substitute.
Says a medical institution providing shelter.
I might say that R twenty, R fifteen and R ten ought not to have convalescent home in it. What is anybody else thinking?
Does not include restaurant.
The definition is a medical institution providing shelter, clothing and food to resident patients. And meeting the definition of a skilled nursing facility, as that term is defined in applicable state and federal texts, it does not include restaurant.
Those are, those are licensed facilities and they, they're generally pretty good size.
Yeah, no, I agree, I assume there's really no space for it.
But right now, we're just, this is technical, so everything here.
This is technical. That's technically right and it's carried, carried forward properly from time to time.
Yeah, so are you saying it's, this isn't right, or are you saying you want to change it? Because that's why I'm saying otherwise we'll put that in the parking lot the next time.
If it, if it's a, um, if it's a totally read by everybody, we can put in dashes right now. We don't have one in town, so no OX is going to be going.
I know, but, I'm just saying.
As a matter of precedence, do we, do we want to start that process now or do we want to wait?
I think, I think it's one of those things, I think it's just better to just keep it in the parking lot, because otherwise you, you just get bogged down.
He's going to keep track of the parking lot.
That's my job.
That's his job.
Okay.
I, I, I put parking lot.
But that's what, that was the point I was bringing up earlier, or the rushing part, right? So I'm in agreeance, I think some of these things could be changed now, I'm not about putting all these in the parking lot. Because we, we're going to be inundated in the parking lot when we get to the parking lot for section two by itself.
I'm, I'm good with it for now, it's hard.
It's going to be too hard to explain to everybody wouldn't we make changes, rather than it just being technical.
And why?
Farm.
Yes.
Golf course. Government service. Institutional use. Multiple dwelling development. Nursing home. Park.
Do you have a difference between nursing home and convalescent home?
I think we do with the definition.
Yeah, or no, I'm, I'm thinking restaurant.
Nursing is establishment which is licensed by the Department of Health Services pursuant to chapter thirty-six-eight, verse of the Connecticut General Statutes. And which furnishes food and shelter to two or more persons unrelated to the proprietor. And in addition, provides services which meet a need beyond the basic provisions of food, shelter, laundry. Such services, services including the not limited assistance in personal hygiene, nutrition, exercise, recreation and health maintenance. Nursing home includes home for the aged and restless, but does not include convalescent home or skilled nursing facility, okay?
Okay, there you go.
That, I think that one is a technical one, too.
Okay, park. Planned residential conservation development. Private school. Public utility facility. Single-family dwelling. Supervised group quarters. Two-family dwelling. Veterinary hospital. That's the end of.
Question.
Go ahead, you.
Um, veterinary hospital, and this may be when we have to park. I'm confused, um, why we have veterinary hospital, R U eighty and forty, but we have the veterinary kennel in.
Clinic. Yeah, one veterinary hospital, one veterinary clinic.
Understood.
No, I'm saying, I'm wondering what to do.
Yeah.
Hospital, uh, boards and clinics is, is a patient.
Well, I think we should check the definitions on that, the way they're written, because I'm not sure that's clear. And why, why we couldn't have both in the same zone, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not judging that, it's, but from the definition, I have the same question, what's the difference?
I put that, yeah. I put that in my. So I put that one in my future concerns list.
I think it's out there.
Yeah.
But right now, it's okay in terms of the special permit to the R U, on the R U eighty and forty zone?
Yeah, it hasn't changed. Okay, we're in a commercial. Adult entertainment.
Actually, back on two-family dwelling, I had a note on that, it's a minor, but, uh, the definition has dwelling, comma, two-family and the, uh. So just want to update the definition to match the use table. It's in there, it's just.
Good catch.
Okay, I will make that note for Francisco. Okay, five-two. Commercial industrial special zones, adult entertainment.
Can we park that one?
Hmm.
Give us a, a flag then on, on the adult entertainment, so we've got a huge section in there that lays it out, it's not in these tables, but in the, in that section. And a lot of that is cloned from Connecticut General Statutes. So do we have an opportunity to refer back to the general statutes and reduce the redundancy and just rewrite that section to shrink it? And just point back to, I think it's fifty-three A, chapter fifty-three A? Because it's, it's a substantial word-for-word lift from, from the state statute.
Um, I'll raise that point with Francisco and see what he says.
And just a question for me, um, SDP. And just a question for me, SDP, the site development plan, so am I correct in that something that's just SDP would fall into your...
No, it's the commissions.
Pardon me?
The commission reviews it, site plans, their discretion to approve them is more limited than with special permit. If they meet all of the requirements, you have to approve them, but it's still a commission decision.
Okay.
Okay, so less discretion than with special permit.
Park it, please park it.
Yes, park it.
Eric, so I gotta go back to the supervised group quarters of the residential?
I didn't see the definition.
I don't think, I didn't see a definition.
Well, let me go back and...
I didn't see a definition for both the very...
Okay. All right, what do you have to move forward here then? We'll get to both livery and...
No, I know that, yeah, okay.
Um, alternative energy systems. Animal shelter. Now, microboat livery.
So, that is under...
It's a site plan at WF twenty, it's a special permit in C-ten and C-thirty. So, a lower level of improvement, approval in WF twenty than it is in the commercial zone.
So, it doesn't, and the definition, it doesn't require it to be a waterfront law, right, so... So, would we, we would park it if we wanted to change it to allow it for the industrial zone?
Yes, that's a future use issue.
Want to park?
Yes.
Okay. Building materials yard. Is this a professional office?
I guess, the building materials, I just want to look at the definition if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
And that is allowed in the... Special permit, okay.
Okay, you good? Business service establishment. Cemetery. Club. Commercial livery, boarding stables, and riding academies. Commercial services.
That one, hold on a minute. Do you want a definition for that?
Do you want a definition for that?
Yeah. Is it, is it under, I'm confused how these definitions are laid out.
They're broken into two different times, uses and...
Don't overturns and...
Don't overturns, so... Make sure you're in the right definition section. Okay?
They all start on one ninety-five.
What's that?
They all start on one ninety-five.
So, this is business service establishment? Okay, I see, I see. Establishment, non-commercial occupation, or a commercial service provider, either on center, off center, on to landscape, and service telephone, insurance service, insurance service, security service. So, that is allowed in the...
That's correct.
That should be allowed in...
Park it, yep.
Yeah, park it.
Community building. Concrete manufacturing and processing. Dairy and bottling works. Dog training.
Park dairy and bottling works if it's only an LI zone?
Yes.
Are we afraid that we're going to get more of those? I mean, do people actually do dairy and bottling works anywhere around here?
There, there are farms that bottle their milk.
Yeah.
Most of the farms right here send their milk out. But, okay, never mind, it's a discussion for later. Dog training facility. Financial institution. Full-service restaurant. Gas station, and we've agreed that we're taking it out of both C-ten and C-thirty, right?
Yes.
Government service.
Where's the footnote one on the restaurant? Let's see that. All right.
Next page.
Next page, okay.
Okay. Indoor recreational facility. In. Institutional use.
What is the SD district? Is this SVDD?
Sound District District.
That's the SVDD, what's the SD?
School.
School?
So, almost nothing's permitted in the school district, because you're pretty much a...
School district, okay, but I didn't know we had a dozen in the school district.
You do. Okay. You have a school district, okay, it's right there in the book, I promise.
I believe you.
Okay, laundromat. Manufacturing. Marine facility.
That one you can park.
Okay. Marine-related sales. Marine research facility.
I would say park the marine-related sales for me, too, please.
Okay. Mixed use.
That one should be parked, because we want to modify that, don't we?
Well, we'll have to wait and see who wants to park it, change whose it is, but yes, it's been talked about as being something that's... Mortuary or funeral service, funeral home, rather. Motor vehicle service. Multi-family housing.
I think that wants a definition.
Hmm?
I think that wants a definition.
Yeah, park that one, too.
Which one, the multi-family?
Multi-family housing.
Okay, I will add that for fun, okay? Outdoor recreation facility. Package store. Park. Planned residential conservation development.
Why couldn't you have a park in a school district? It just seems pretty...
I don't know, you want to add that for later here, is it, okay?
Park the outdoor recreation facility for me, please.
Park the...
Outdoor.
Outdoor recreation facility. Okay. Okay, uh, primary or secondary schools, and obviously, that one's in the school district, okay? Um, public utility facility. Recreation entertainment facility. Rental or leasing of automobiles. Research laboratory. Retail establishment. Self-storage. Now, again, we moved that one to LI, so it's not in the right location here, it should be only in LI at this point, right?
Right.
Okay. Uh, septic storage and transfer facility. Shared septic systems. Single-family dwelling.
Park that one.
Takeout restaurants. Telecommunications tower antenna or building. Theater. Tourist home, is that?
There's a definition.
Yeah.
There is a definition.
Driver has it, it's used for temporary lodging accommodations, to look for travel tourists or other short-term guests. Tourist home provides sleeping accommodations, mainly accessories. Yeah, park that one.
It didn't need current rating, it has not changed, but I will park it for you, okay? Truck, bus, or fleet terminal. Veterinary clinic. Warehouse and yacht club.
Michael, I've said it before, that is a weird, it's not in the water, is it?
Yeah, park that one. I'm going to have that parking lot full.
Was that a yacht club?
The yacht club, apparently, we can't have a yacht club in the water, is it?
And I'd like to park the clean cat club.
Yeah, I agree with that one.
Okay.
Yeah, before we move on, the, um... The tourist home, um, what are the thoughts on Airbnbs in town? And how, how do we regulate those to go with the, fit into the mix here?
Already operating down in the...
I did.
They're already operating down in the...
I think it's a serious subject, because of all the beach communities are rentals, right? So, I don't want to...
And they have been short-term rentals for hundreds of years.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the shoreline, because people do rent the signs all summer long, right, rental, or they're going to else rent down.
Well, I mean, do you want to regulate them in other zones beside RU ten, or is that...
Maybe something for discussion.
Also, we put it in park, the tourist homes.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying, partly, yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Because I think that could be the issue down the road, and the next door neighbor turns his house into their...
I think the issue's already here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the question, sitting in my seat, is, how do I easily regulate that with the staff I have? Because I can't go inside to take a look, um, without a search warrant. So, who's living inside a house at any given time is a really hard thing for me to regulate.
Well, just like all the other complaints, they come from neighbors, or someone says, get Airbnb in the house out, and, uh...
Okay, so, I, I knock on the door, I say, "What?" I mean, again, I...
I'm from the town, I'm here to help you.
I think that's slippery slope, right? Is it being abused? I'm sure.
But, it's a hard, hard thing, I just had a big fight with a woman who is having her parents stay in her RV over the summer, every summer. Um, and I had to say, "I'm sorry, we don't allow you to have people living in RVs." And she said, "Well, can I consider it an accessory apartment?" I'm like, "No, can't do that either." Um, but she's like, "Well, in the revised version of the rig, can you have people living in RVs for the summer?" And I said, "I don't think that's probably going to fly..."
All I'm saying is, we should discuss it.
Absolutely.
Because, uh, panel is a mystic, half a block is Airbnbs, during the summer, people come, there are huge parties, there's music, and it's a big issue along the shoreline.
It's absolutely a big issue.
It's how my, my life, my entire life, three parties, that's what I'm looking forward to every June.
James, like, where am I going to party then?
We could take a look to see what other towns could do, how to enforce it.
Fun, actually.
All I'm saying is...
Yeah, it is.
It's something we're discussing.
Absolutely, and, and it is, there are model regs in Connecticut for Airbnb.
Yeah, well, I've had some. One thing I can say is that the beach communities is where people want to go.
Right.
And that's how those beaches are set up, they were weekly rentals, that's how they've been forever. Now, whether they're slowly gentrifying, now becoming homes, it really isn't a good fit to try to regulate that in the online.
I, I would agree with you.
I wouldn't even touch it on the shoreline, I'm talking north of one thirty-six.
Yeah, but once you try to divide the town and say, "You guys can do it, but you guys can't..."
I think we're agreeing to park it for now, because we're not going to get through our, our, this night's activities if we start getting sideburned by everyone.
I'm going to start it, isn't it?
I'm going to advertise your in-house.
Listen, before we can move forward, we have to establish blame. That was my, that was a crackaway, we're not moving forward until somebody's paying for it.
I'll just throw it out there, I think Jane wants the Airbnb or else.
I park it, she can blame me.
I can make a home.
Back to section six.
Moving right along now.
Exactly, not trying to keep a soundtrack here, but I do want to go to sleep tonight. Okay. Buildings, accessory buildings, and we are clear as to what the asterisks is mean. Okay. Accessory farm buildings.
So, what's the, I'm sorry. Uses allowed by same permit type required for the principal use or indicated as an asterisk. I guess I'm not understanding how these stars are applying in this scenario.
What they're saying is, however the primary use is regulated, so the primary use is by zoning permit, then the accessory buildings by zoning per.
Okay.
Okay, the primary use is by site plan, the accessory building by site plan.
Okay.
So, whatever your primary is, your accessory tracks that rule, okay? Um, garage.
Is there a definition for accessory farm building for you there?
I...
On top of my head, no, we can take a look.
Not there.
No, if you'd like me to include that as a definition.
That's one that's going to be...
So, can I just back up?
What if you have barn?
Accessory buildings in general, we've had quite a number of those come before us in the beach area. And to say that they are regulated by the same permit, so, single-family residences mostly don't need one of a permit. So, does that mean that accessory buildings in the beach area also don't need anything?
Well, you have a sort of a special category in the flood zone, and that's sort of regulated separately. Accessory buildings over a certain size in the flood zone are regulated by special permit, and that's sort of...
Is that a hundred and thirteen?
Did we see that in our residential zone? Our, our residential section here?
No, because again, that's sort of separate, the flood zone has its own sort of separate category, maybe we need to call that out, but there is a sort of separate category in the flood zone for accessory buildings in the flood zone. So, if we, we want to go back and mention that to Francisco and have that called out in some way, we'd maybe let, yeah.
Maybe we could have a new...
We can have a footnote there, like we have for some of these other ones, saying footnote, okay, for accessory buildings in flood zone.
And it's a hundred and twelve feet that meets the threshold, to call it an accessory structure?
Honestly, Michael, I'll have to go back and look, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Sorry, what wrong?
Okay, so, again, garage, guest house, roadside shelters for school children. Central air compressors.
Can I ask what that is?
It's where the kids sit.
It's a bus stop.
Yeah, like a covered bus stop.
Yeah, like a little hut.
Thank you. I'd be a second also.
The definition didn't even help me, that's what I envisioned.
It's because we were hardware, we didn't need shelters for a bus stop.
Well, the shelters that I see are like a hundred years old, so...
Did you walk uphill to school?
Uh, both ways.
Both ways uphill, no shoes.
Can I just go a respectful thing of that?
Sure.
So, if, if you don't need a permit for the, the thing itself, like a house, or...
You do need a permit for a house, every house needs permit.
No, no, not a, a special permit. Okay, so...
A zoning permit, everything in this, in this thing requires a zoning permit by and of.
Okay, so...
So, you have a vacant lot, you figure out...
So, guest house has ZP all the way across. Why do we use the asterisk? Why don't we just say what these permits are?
It's a good question.
Because it, there may be, again, I'll, I'll ask Francisco that question, but I guess the question, the point is that in, there may be certain situations where that use, particularly in commercial zones, is different from zone to zone. And trying to get it right in every instance is...
So, that, that wouldn't not be this column here, that if it's different from zone to zone?
Absolutely, yes.
So, I guess I would like, rather than the asterisk, because I find it to be a little hard to understand, that the actual permit...
We just actually put the under outline.
Permit, and a dash if it's not, no.
Not allowed there.
Not allowed, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going there, too, I was kind of...
Yes.
Then, I, I was thinking, there's got to be a rationale for this, but I couldn't figure out.
I wonder if it's because the whole page will say ZP on it.
But that's okay, and that's okay.
Yeah.
It's okay, because you'll know it's, well, how it's regulated, and that'll help us to decide. So, we might have to go back and talk something else from here.
Well, let me, again, I, I will go back to Francisco with, summarize what we're looking at here, and, and do that, okay? So, there's probably a little point in going through the asterisks and stuff, but let's talk about the ones that aren't asterisks, which is electrical vehi, electric vehicle charging station. Trailer, go ahead.
Farm stands, because it's prohibited in the multi, prohibited in the multi-family residential district, where, where is the MFRT one? That's the one, that's not the one I mentioned, so, I don't know. All right.
I don't know, I, I don't have a zoning map in front of me.
Okay, keep going, no, no, keep going. You're fine, okay. Um, thank you.
Fence for a wall. Okay.
What's the R, asterisk?
You said it doesn't have that.
Has the only one.
Trailer, construction storage office, no, thank you, I'm already thirsty.
Um, trailer storage one, that was...
By zoning permit, that's one of the ones, just that zoning permit.
Okay.
Okay? Um, accessory alcohol sales.
Thank you for that.
I think these are from Madge.
Oh, thank you, Madge.
Thank you.
Accessory apartment.
Park that one.
Okay. Next, again, we're going to skip over the asterisk forms. Electric vehicle charging station.
Where are you?
Did I skip over a page? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over a page here, but back to bed and breakfast. Boarding of horses. Commercial vehicle parking.
Park that one.
Home occupation. Keeping of pets. Letting of rooms. Private dog kennel.
Yeah, something's different here.
No, she's not going to do it.
Oh, I apologize.
Oh, yeah.
Let's give him the answer.
I have a question. Yeah?
Letting of rooms.
Letting of.
Bed and breakfast and Airbnb. Are they mutually exclusive?
We don't have Airbnb regulated at all.
Okay, so then what about bed and breakfast?
Bed and breakfast, yeah, bedding and breakfast, very specific definitions as to what a bed and breakfast is. You've gotta live there, and there's only a certain number of rooms, no more than six rooms.
Two people per room.
Two people per room, it, it's very clearly spelled out exactly what bed and breakfast means.
Do we have any of those in town?
Um, I think we do, yeah.
Oh, we had to be in Thistle.
No, but that wasn't in, wasn't.
That was in.
Is a.
We had, bed and breakfast used to be at the number one saloon, I don't think it is anymore, but was.
Oh, that, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And Mrs. Luddington lives the house next to the church, used to. These are all people who are long since dead.
I think the one, um, next to the congregation church might be.
Yeah, Mrs. Luddington.
You definitely.
Oh, that's, every time the same, sorry.
Yeah.
You know the house, she knows the name.
Mrs. Luddington lived in it when Dad was alive.
She went to Harvard there.
And, and it's been in a Hallmark movie, by the way, so.
That's true, so that's got its own definition then.
Calm down, Dan, boy.
Okay.
We're rowdy in here.
Private dog.
Yeah.
Private dog kennel.
He, I must be allergic, I eat the popcorn, I'm like sweating.
Tag sale.
Um, okay, what was the last one you said?
Private dog kennel.
Okay, yes.
Tag sale.
Recreational vehicle parking, is that?
Recreational vehicle, what is asterisk, so I haven't been hitting the asterisks, if you want us.
Yeah, park that one specifically.
Okay. Okay. Uh, back to six two, where I was a minute ago, I had a.
There's a, there's a typo on the definition, because it says already your trail parking.
The definition.
Oh, it's in the definition.
Okay, I'll flag that to tell Francisco about. Um, six two, again. Um, skipping down, again, just things that have letters.
I would like you to, to park accessory buildings in garage.
Okay. Um, electric ve- electric vehicle charging station. Fence or wall. Structure or rooftop mounted antennas.
Mine differently than you guys?
He's skipping the asterisk.
Oh, okay, you're skipping the asterisk, alright, but no, so. I wouldn't say skip the asterisk specifically, because if we don't wanna talk about anything specific within the asterisk zone. Like, I would like to have parking for the, um.
Well, there's something you wanna park.
Yeah, park the private boathouse or dock. That's all I got right now.
Okay. Trailer construction storage office, you parked that on the other one, you wanna park it too?
Yes, please.
Trailer permanent storage.
That one as well.
Trailer temporary storage. Terraces and stairways, it's asterisked, okay. Um, alcohol sales, accessory alcohol sales. Boarding of courses. Commercial vehicle parking.
I'd like that one. Also accessory motor vehicle service, please.
Family childcare, homeless, again, the asterisk, again, home occupation.
That one as well.
Keeping of pets. And just a couple things here, private dog kennel and tag sale. Anything else that you wanna park on this?
Yes, laboratory and laundry facilities, guest room and marine facility, park that one. Letting of rooms. Off-street parking. Outdoor recreation facilities, outdoor storage of goods. Recreational vehicle or trailer parking. And, uh.
Not sale of fuel, fuel for boats?
No.
It mentions boats.
I know, but it's, it is permitted, so I think that's.
Boats go on water.
Okay. Um, that's all I have for you, Steve. Are there other things you wanna work on tonight?
If we have time.
Well, take a section.
Uh, so, so what we said, we were gonna look at everything in red, look at, um, uh, and then, and look at definitions. So I don't know if we wanna start with all the stuff in red, or if we wanna start with definitions, maybe through the definitions, and that's what we said we were gonna go through.
Okay, well, let's go to chart, we're just, one.
So do the definitions start?
Section twenty five, I hear, is all terminology definitions?
Uh, we, we also have definitions on twenty four, are those not changed?
Word use and abbreviations, it says.
This is a big one.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, right, section twenty five, though.
It's okay, I mean, if you wanna.
Nope, I was confused, I, I was.
No, you're, I was with you on that.
Twenty four and twenty six.
If you wanna, if you wanna look at the word use and abbreviations we can.
Nope, nope, that's, nope, twenty five and twenty six.
Okay, so let's, let's start with twenty five then. And again, if it's not in color, it hasn't changed from what we have now. And again, sometimes it's been consolidated from different sections into this one section.
But in this case, this is the blue, that is additional language.
Um, yes.
What's the difference between the blue and the black?
Black is, black is already, black is already there, yeah.
So blue is new.
So on the first page, and then we may have already said this before, but there's two definitions of attic.
Yes.
It probably should be one.
Well, actually, our regs have two now, because it's defined differently in different. So we need to figure out why it's defined differently in different places, and then say except in.
I'm just saying, we need to fix.
Maybe it's a conservation, um, gateway conservation.
Yeah, with the flood zone, I don't know, I'll, I'll figure out why there's two.
Yeah, and, and we probably should say attic, and we, we need to then qualify if there's a different definition.
Same with accessory. Accessory.
Accessory, accessory use.
Building or use that is clearly subordinate to the principal building or use.
Well, we're not gonna change anything, we're just looking to see if they missed anything.
But there's new definitions, it's like I'm saying.
Right.
That's the point, there are new definitions, so now we gotta really pay attention here, because these definitions are now defining different things that weren't defined before.
This book being red. Is that in blue or?
They're in blue. So this one, I think, is a very important piece to this puzzle right here.
Is that in, is that in blue? Oh my god.
I think, I think when I did this, I put all the things in red. And I went through the regs, and I compiled it all under definition, so this is, it's gonna take me a minute to.
Yeah, no, I, I would agree, I, I, because we do have some red in here, but the blue, that's what I was saying before. This isn't a complete switchover from the old to the new, but in the new, there's a bunch of new content.
Next time, when he does the print version, change it from blue to some other color, just. You don't have to hold it too far away, and you can't tell.
Yeah, I mean, I'm really looking, I don't see that it's blue, I see.
Let me see your piece.
If you look at, you guys have the June one, you look at the July one, that's, it's a little clearer to me in the July.
Maybe keep the different colors a little bit separate.
Okay.
Yeah, just breathe.
Well, with that in mind, with that in mind.
That comes up.
There's a lot of blue in here.
So can you refresh our memories of, in the blue, are these definitions that we didn't have before?
Correct.
Yeah, those are.
And, and, um, our, our, for higher group.
They, they, they are definitions that Francisco has pulled from other regs or other sources to put in here.
So they were terms we had, but we didn't define.
That, that, there are terms we already had in regs that previously did not have a definition.
Perfect, thank you.
Or that he had to put one in, because he had to add it.
Yes.
Or, I mean, he said that, you know, some of them, it's like, there's lots of things, and trying to make it more streamlined or repetitive, and, you know. Just make it be in line with the new regulations about, um, making more concise, readable, user-friendly kind of documents, essentially.
And there were times where you guys used similar terms, and tried to consolidate it into one term where you used similar terms.
So like a porch, for instance, a portion of a building which has a roof and a floor that is not enclosed by full walls. Is full walls a window? Is that a curtain? Is that a?
Wall is a wall.
Yeah, but, I mean, the window is a wall. Right? This is a wall with the window in it, right? So if you have a porch that has windows in it, is that considered a wall?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so a wall is not a wall, a wall is a window. I'm just more looking at, is.
You're moving into the territory, lawyer, you can't go there.
No, but I mean, this is the stuff that's important, right? So if you have a house that has a porch, are we adding that as additional square footage? Are we, is it not square footage? If, what's the threshold?
Can you walk through it?
I was still at accessory.
I just jumped ahead, because I noticed that was a definition.
Are we, or, let's, let's, let's start, let's start.
We didn't go with mine by luck, we're looking at blue.
By, on page one eighty seven.
One eighty seven.
One more definitions, general to the document, I really feel that we should be capitalizing the definitions uniformly throughout the document.
Do that.
It's.
The, Francisco did not wanna do that.
Capitalize, sorry.
I, I know that, and I feel, I feel very differently about it, I've never been, I've never been involved with any legal document with any standing. And this does have standing, because we're gonna, it's gonna under, it's gonna underpin decisions that are subject to legal challenge, so.
What are you saying?
If the term is defined.
When you're using a defined term in the defined context, it should be capitalized in the, in the document.
Like the whole, all the whole script, you mean?
No, no, the first letter of.
First letter.
First letter.
Oh, it's not?
When it, no, when it appears in the, in the reg, he took out the capitalization. It used to be capitalized.
So, I mean, now you have.
It should be, I mean, that's just, that's standard practice.
Except now you're defining a budding, so you're telling me every time you see the word a budding in the reg, it's capitalized?
If it's used in the, if, if it's used in the defined context.
So he was saying just about every word that.
So you, you, every sentence is going to be a mass jumble of capitalizations.
That's why, that's what he said.
Maybe, if not the terms, and certainly the, the, um, the use definitions.
That's where we are now.
They are capitalized with the first letter and the use definition, it's just not in the context.
But they're not informed when they're used in the document.
I understand.
So, so take a term like buffer, buffer has a generic meaning, and then it has a specific context when it's invoked based on this definition. So when it's invoked in the context of the definition, then it should, it should be capitalized, so that, so it's unambiguous.
But again, if you look through these, abutting, accessory, actual construction, addition, adjoining, out yet, altar, attic, awning, basement. I mean, if you capitalize all of this, then every sentence is going to be a jumble of caps and not caps. And I think it's gonna read clunky, that's what he was saying.
So if not the zone and terminology definitions, then the, the use definitions.
I think he said something that he, he, he put a line in, didn't he say that? That, that the words are as defined unless otherwise indicated, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's, he, I think he put in some kind of catch sentence, so that you couldn't say, um, this is a different definition or something like that. I think he said something about that.
Do you want them, would boulding be an, I mean, again, I'm trying to avoid the whole up and down keacing, which I think is really hard to, to, to read. Would boulding be acceptable, or you really think it needs to be capitalized?
I'm less concerned about the, the specific means to format it than to not have ambiguity in here that could be used as the basis for a challenge.
Well, but if he specifically defines this term as, if every time you see this term, it is as defined. Then I don't think we have any ambiguity on that sentence, so.
If that's the case, and I, I think in some, again, in some of the terminology, that may be the case, but I think in the, in the use definitions.
Is there, is the concern that it becomes an adjective versus a?
Or is it generically and not as specified?
So then we're constantly referring to the subject.
But, but if you have a line in your regs that say, whenever this word appears, that it always is defined, as defined.
Yes.
Will that help?
So that's what I think.
Yeah, if that's in there, yeah.
I think he needs to put that in there.
I think that's, I think that's it, for me part of that.
Otherwise, it just gives, it gives wiggle.
Yeah, I, I appreciate what you're saying, I think because of the way zoning regs are written, though, is they, they don't have that generic narrative. They always are very specific, so I think that you can write, I, I think, I appreciate the discussion, but I, I think that they're just so specific that they're always referring to the definitions, it's like.
Okay, let me clarify this with Francisco.
Clarify it, but I think that that's the case.
Yeah, and it's set out that every time, every time the terms or the use definitions appear, then they are as defined in.
Yeah.
Section twenty five and twenty six, that, that was it.
Okay. Well, let me make sure we, we have a sentence that says explicitly that, okay? So let's start at the top of definitions, if there are blue definitions we'd like to talk about, let's start with that. So, do I need to read through them one by one, or do, how do you wanna do this?
Kind of helped me, because I can hardly tell which one.
Well, honestly.
Well, she knows, there's a lot.
We, Craig gave me a flagrant, I'm upset, so I.
So I can, there's at least third.
Michael, why don't you start reading them, you seem to have best color sense here.
Why not start reading?
I have it on computer.
Why don't you read?
Yeah, they're straight there.
E, e, either Michael, any Michael.
I'll let him read, because I'm stuck at reading.
It's very clear on the computer, I have to switch over.
Okay.
And before we do that, for example, accessories in blue.
Yes.
So the reason this is new is because there was a.
We didn't.
Statute, we didn't have a term for it before.
We, we, we used it, but we didn't define it, and we, and he thought we should have a definition for it.
So on accessory, a building or use that is clearly subordinate to the principal building or use and located on the same lot with such principal building or use. Can an accessory use be on a lot that doesn't have a principal use?
No, it cannot. That's illegal under the present regs.
Right.
So that one looks okay.
And in fact, this is sort of a rephrasing of what the regs already say about accessory, that, that, that's not really, he defines it as a definition, but our regs already say pretty much exactly that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, this is.
Addition. Addition. Okay.
Moving on.
Adjoining.
Anyone next?
Buffer.
Did you wanna discuss the two annexes?
Well, I, I just, I've already flagged it as marked.
You already flagged it, okay, gotcha.
So after buffer is caliper.
So does the buffer always have to be within a required yard?
No.
Well, I think this is sort of just landscaped buffer, and no, it doesn't have to be within a required yard, so.
So asking whether we could, um, say that, that within a required yard.
Their required law could be deluded.
Yeah, I think we just need to say an area which contains.
Yeah.
Okay. So now it down to caliper. Okay, next.
Certificate of office custody.
We never had that in our.
We didn't define it, it was there, we didn't define it. Okay. Next, I just won't get you.
Certification of zoning compliance.
Next.
Change of use.
Anybody, keep going.
Class A to survey.
Okay, we're good.
Commercial vehicle, I'd like to discuss that one, because that's a new definition, and this one can have some unintended consequences. Any motor vehicle with commercial plates or with lettering markings, racks, or other parent accessories indicating it is intended for use other than personal and or recreational transportation. So any vehicle that is owned by a business would have commercial plates on it. But that business can also be a home business, or it can be, you could be a salesman, and you work for a business, and you have a commercial license plate, even if you are a car or a truck, so it, it doesn't differentiate between the two, a commercial license plate. Um, so my concern is, is somewhere else in these regs, that you're only allowed one commercial vehicle per property. So if they're defining any vehicle with commercial license plates, that might preclude people from being able to have their own business and work at another company somewhere else and have a company car, and they can't park them both at their property at the same time.
Yeah, farms, farms get commercial plates sometimes, because they take those vehicles off the farm.
Correct. So that, I, I'd like to just park that definition, because I think that. This definition needs to be comprehended further in other portions of the regulations on how it could be interpreted, on how. It might limit people's use of their vehicles and their properties.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else has any input on that one.
Yeah, I know, there is this.
I think it's, I think it's part of that too. I like how you put it that it needs to be like where, how is it being referenced in throughout the zoning and so. Is, what is the requirement for this definition?
Correct. That's a new thing, right? Because that's, so that's my concern about the unintended consequences of. These definitions might have that effect in the regulations somewhere that we don't even know exists.
So what is the opposite of a commercial vehicle?
Uh, just a passenger vehicle plate.
Is that?
So because he, he was specific about plates, so like I have, my wife G has a commercial plate on it.
He doesn't have any definition of passenger vehicle in here.
Well, I don't think we, we limit passenger vehicles in any way, shape or form. We limit commercial vehicles.
Yeah, the zoning regulations don't control passenger vehicles and cars that you can have at your house, but we do regulate how many commercial vehicles can be parked at a residential home. So I think that that is important to just dive into at some point. I'm not saying it's now, but I want to hope that it helps. Because I think we need to understand how it's used further along in here.
Yep.
Okay. Next, after that.
Can we do a search, a word search on, you know, PDF to see where else it just said you then figure out what we should.
I'm just, I'm just doing that, just saying that like mostly it's in the context of parking and, um, I'm seeing one reference to loading space. But most of, most, mostly it's, it's parking.
Is it parking by, and was it size of vehicle?
Yes, that's another problem, right? The size limited seventy-five hundred gross vehicle weight, right? Well, my truck weighs seventy-five hundred just sitting out there. So therefore that wouldn't be able to. Yeah, that's correct. That was supposed to be including a load. So there are vehicles that passengers drive.
Well, maybe that could be because it was written at a time when you didn't have.
Having a vehicle.
You didn't.
And that's in PRCDs for seventy-five hundred. I did not see that. Or is a commercial vehicle parking, is that definition?
And that's what I'm thinking, we have to tap a lot on the more substantive stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, but see, we're going to adopt these regulations with these new definitions, so there's, we might have.
No, we can park, we don't have to. We can, we can, we can leave.
Yeah, we're parking it for not phase two, but for phase one.
For parking to discuss.
We can, we can do both.
Yeah, because I think it needs to be, if we adapt this in phase one, it's going to have that result that I'm discussing.
No, I would, I would say if it's going, if it's going to have it, then we would park it until we can see all this stuff.
Good enough.
Nothing's getting improved. It's getting cleaned up.
No, I understand, but in the cleanup.
Yes, we need to identify.
We, we might have unintended consequences in the cleanup.
Okay.
Because we have the definition.
Next, only on these. What's the next one?
Called as that?
Which is fine, you can see that that's the first time.
Okay.
Detached dwelling.
So dwelling is defined, yeah, okay.
Detached structure.
I, I guess put an asterisk next to that one.
Is that a what?
The detached structure, because I just don't know how that plays into these regulations similar to the commercial vehicle parking.
Like busyboos and stuff?
Okay.
And district, that's in red, so that's a.
That's just relocated.
Relocated. Drainage. Does he need to look at that definition?
Yeah, that's a related definition.
Yeah, we don't control all the drainage, so I would like to say we did, but.
You wish.
There's natural drainage and there's controlled drainage, let's just say. So I think we need to work on that one.
Uncontrolled drainage, okay. Next.
Evergreen.
Evergreen tree.
Expansion.
We could just change these conifers.
Just to not let people see if anyone can.
Exactly. Well, we're going to put that definition in there.
Expansion, any increase in the size or capacity of a structure or use beyond its original dimensions or scope.
Yeah, I, I have trouble with that. Evergreen tree saying too. We need to look at that one. I don't know what.
We're going back and flagging evergreen tree.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Let me see where it's used because.
Where else is that going to be used in that?
Why is it twenty feet?
I know, it's like, well, when you plant it, it's like, when you plant a six foot tree, it's not evergreen. It's only evergreen when it gets to twenty feet.
And then what happens when it's thirty feet?
No, that's expected height.
Expected mature height. Expected mature height.
I go that one.
All right.
I still think, I still, I still think it needs to tell. I still think it needs to tell.
Buffer requirements.
Well, there you go.
Well, there's our.
But not in the yard.
Okay. Well, let's take, I just want to take a look at it to make sure.
I'll look at these.
That's all I need.
Expansion, folks.
I will take a, I, I meant to say, I didn't.
Expansion.
Expansion, you know? An increase in the size or capacity of a structure or use beyond its original dimension. I mean, that's pretty broad. Or use beyond its original dimensions.
I mean, that's.
I was thinking of land.
No, this is really tied to not conforming uses.
Okay.
Okay.
Finished grade.
Oh, did we, what is our definition of family? Didn't we have to tweak that at some point? Was that some case law thing or no?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Is that Hartford thing?
Yeah.
So this definition of family is what is required?
Well, you can, you can be, you can be broader, but yeah.
We've always had a rather broad definition because of all the.
Is that blue or is that not?
No, it's not blue. That's why, yeah, I just, but while we're talking about things, I just figured.
That's, that's been our.
That's my case.
Okay, finished grade.
Oh, so should we turn now?
Yeah.
What's that? Yeah, that's definitely a sleazy dicey one, right?
One has one of the most liberal definitions of family zoning. Because it's six.
It says, or a group. Doesn't define it as family.
No, no, just any six people.
And any six people are a family.
Kind of like that.
Okay. Finished grade. Okay, next, I don't have it in color.
Floor.
How do you know without them?
Floor.
Because I choose what's headed before floor.
Underneath the ceiling, how about that one?
See, the top surface is enclosed. Ground cover. I feel like that one might need some, uh. Plant materials generally not. See, don't you see ground cover is more than plant materials? Anyone? Stone is ground cover. Rock is ground cover.
I don't usually.
Depends on how it's used.
But, yeah, so that's my.
Now we can take a look at that.
Park the ground cover.
Okay. Next.
Uh, the next one is landscaping. So in the, in the landscaping definition, installation of minor structures in a, whatever that word is, um, pertinences. What are defined as minor structures? Is that something that needs to be clarified?
I, I don't know if we have a definition of minor structures.
Yeah.
Do we want to define minor structures?
Maybe, I, I don't know. It's just structure to structure, so.
Or do we want to keep it?
Vague.
Vague.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna get that for, for more flexibility.
Yeah, I'm just going to ask the obvious. What is an appurtenances?
Oh, that's anything that goes along with something else.
It's illegal to have your structure as an appurtenance.
Like the windmill of a, of a.
So, um, a way to get to a house, the driveway is appurponent to the house.
Okay, thank you.
It's lawyer language.
Load, uh, loading space in off-street area of birth for the loading or unloading of commercial vehicles. So, yeah, okay, I can see that.
You can see that, you're willing to let that one go, okay. Next.
Motor vehicle.
Well, I guess commercial vehicle, because it's a passenger.
That's a straight reference. That's a straight, yeah, I'm close to the state.
Okay, next.
No one has anything on overly zone, I'll, I'm going to stop at parking area. Um, because it specifies motor vehicles. Well, there's other types of vehicles besides motor vehicles. Trailers are, are a vehicle, but they're not a motor vehicle.
Okay, so you just wanted to say vehicle?
No, I just, just park it, but I just want to read into that how it's used somewhere else in this, in this later on, if you don't mind.
Okay. Next, after that.
Porch.
That was that one I jumped ahead on.
Look at that, written especially for you, Mike.
I know, it came up, I knew it would come up. I guess just keep going with it. I'll let that one slide for you guys.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, very generous to see.
I know.
Next.
Residents.
Located in a permanent structure, so.
It doesn't say human, wouldn't it be?
It's the same thing, yeah.
How about someone who's not human in there?
Human, okay.
It refers to what? It refers to dwelling units, just thought of that. One more dwelling unit, sounds.
Park the residence.
Park it? Why you?
Dwelling unit, one or more rooms providing complete living facilities for one capital fam, capitalized family.
Ooh.
Including equipment for cooking or provisions for staying, et cetera, having a separate entrance.
So this is under residence?
No, it's dwelling.
Yeah, residence.
He's going back to dwelling units.
Oh, okay.
This takes a question of mine, any residents that plans.
Maybe just because it shows up a lot, so to just kind of. Get out in front of it.
I don't know, it's one or more than this one.
Yeah, I mean, you have single-family residents and then you have multifamily residents. In fact, you have a whole zone that's multifamily resident zone, so. Okay, next.
Screen.
Containing wall.
That seems fitting. Screen or screaming? Dents, vegetation or other landscaping materials, fences, walls or condition that affect the year round. Setback? Shade tree?
Not a coniferous.
It's a city.
Desiduous, desiduous.
I think that, that these, these numbers for thirty-five feet are great. I don't really know if I buy into the, the height.
Well, you gotta go look at how it's used.
Still in, it's probably in a buffer.
There's landscaping specifications, so I think the heights are a significant part of it.
So do we want to park that guy or just let it go?
I don't know.
You want to go back and review how it's used to make sure it's, it's right.
So I'll, I'll flag shade tree.
Yeah, flag it.
Okay.
Shrub?
It could be deciduous growl.
Can we go back up the, the shoreline flood and erosion control structures?
Where's that?
It's between.
Just the shade tree and shrub.
Obviously.
My finger is over it. No, my finger is over it. Where is he looking?
So, so, um, I, I just, again, I'm, I'm going to go back to, again, we're, we're a town of water and. I know our flood and erosion commission is going to have a lot to say about some of these things. So, um, I just, I'd like to park that one is to make sure it is up with the, you know, current broader, um, definitions in this.
To include living shorelines. Because that's a flood and erosion control structure.
Well, and just how we talk about these things in twenty twenty-five is just whatever this definition was saying.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, like a, a living shoreline is considered a flood and erosion control.
I'll have to change it now, but it's one of the things to look at.
Yeah.
And it, we may not want to just say shoreline because they kind of.
No, but I mean, we almost need a definition for a living shoreline if it's not in here for the.
I'm sure.
Well, because you're saying at the end it says along the shoreline. You're right. We've got the Connecticut River.
Right, which is not shoreline.
Yeah, okay.
Does FEMA have regulation over that?
Yes, they have a law.
Right, so you're going to be driven by FEMA.
No, not necessarily regarding the shoreline living, uh. So like a.
Not living.
No, 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 that's.
So, but like a shoreline flood erosion control structure, a living shoreline is a hardened.
Right.
Yeah, so what I'm suggesting is there might be additional terms that we would want to pull down.
Correct, that's what I'm getting at.
That would be relevant, given that we live.
And I'd like to just look at that in terms of our whole regulations.
And then have to.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to tie the definition into looking at the whole piece.
Okay, that's a great point.
Shrub.
If it's not.
Say like.
Deciduous like coniferous or, you know, or it could be a fungi, who knows? I was like, what?
A big mushroom.
Oh.
But is it evergreen?
But like the shrubs they have down in like Black Point, they're higher than six feet, so they're shrub.
You don't have a shrub.
But they're lower than.
I have a shrub.
No, you're a shrimp.
But here it's saying a mature height is at least six feet, but if it's thirty-five feet, it's like.
So by this definition.
And some enforcement is coming after you.
Yeah, I think it's meant to be at least or under six feet, wouldn't you think?
Yeah.
I would think so, I don't, yeah.
And I would, I would say six feet.
Yeah, clearly I think that's a typo.
Yeah, I'm guessing that might be a.
I would say like ten feet.
Well, I'm just thinking of like Black Point, they have shrubs.
Yeah.
But they're ten feet tall.
Yeah, I would say that's a, I would say six feet's a little bit short, but you don't want to say at least six feet because it could be thirty-five and that's a tree.
So by this definition of shrub, both the previous definitions of evergreen and, and shade tree fall within the definition of the shrub.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, these, these.
Yeah, it's clearly a typo. Clearly, uh, should be no more than as opposed to at, at least, so. Okay, next.
What, what's the, well, the next, the next red one was subdivision, but that was just a.
That's relocation.
Relocation.
I would like to dig into water dependent use and transient. They're not yellow, they're not blue, but at some point I feel like I want to.
Wait, did you jump down? Oh, because there's no more of it.
Yeah, there's no more blues on this page.
Well, yeah, and the, you know.
You want transient and water dependent use?
Yep.
The water dependent use is probably statuteually defined, so just keep that in mind.
Yeah, it sometimes is, sometimes not.
And that's where we need to look at it in terms of our regs.
Where do we use the term transient in most, in our regs?
It's going to be you if you're moving.
Well, I'm, I'm bringing it up because of like transient voters. The reason I picked up, Mike, was because of, uh, we use transient voters. In water dependent use situations, so I just want to make sure that I'm putting some clarification on that. I don't know if transient's being used for that specific type of.
Yeah.
But I just.
No, I think that.
No, it's somewhere else. It's a boring.
Probably.
I will, yeah, but that works.
Well, we probably should look at that.
Okay, what's the next one?
All right, so then, next page, number twenty-six.
Transients used around names by directions.
Oh, okay.
Making progress. Accessory, accessory, alcohol sales.
So they, I just go there, use a transient, so here's one where transient is used generically, so.
Yeah.
You back to our former discussion, so it, it is not. So if we say every time you see transient, it means someone who's, who's temporarily out of town, then, um. In eight three ten, it refers to a transient vehicle, vehicle.
I see, that's why I want to pick that one.
Which is not a person. Which, which is not a person.
Not a person, so, yeah.
Oops. Good catch, good catch.
Okay, so wrong definition, use definition is now. Okay, accessory alcohol sales.
Wouldn't that be like a restaurant that sells, what else would sell liquor on premises?
Um, grocery stores.
Well, then all the baggage drop, but they sell it, as in, I don't know, just another.
I know that the chest don't work, and wants to sell beer now. Okay. Next.
Accessory motor vehicle service.
I'll park that one for now, I understand that one a little bit further.
Okay. Next, after that.
Adult entertainment, C section seven point one point five.
Cause it's undefinable.
You know when you see it?
You know, you.
No, no, you don't even know that.
That's upsetting to me. What's the difference?
Yeah, one leaves you with a negative.
One's legal and one's not.
Doesn't have the definition.
One, one leaves you happy, and the other one's supposed to leave you sad.
Oh, I see, okay. Well, what's called a joke?
Do we need this, I mean, we kinda kept our cannabis in town, do we need this in our regs, or is this something we can just say?
I want, I.
We don't want this in our.
Yeah, that's a good point, but I, I probably got rid of this years ago.
Over that verbiage in, in.
There was a reason, right?
There's a reason, can I talk?
There's a lift from.
Yes, Jane knows why.
From CGS.
I know why it's there.
Why?
Because somebody told us that we could not exclude it, constitutional.
Yeah, that's a first amendment issue.
Really? That's what it looked like.
You, you have to allow it somewhere in town.
No, so I, so I wanna get, but having all of the definitions replicated from Connecticut general statutes.
Yes.
Is necessary.
Well, yeah, you, you, you've already flagged it, as I say, I wanna go talk to, to Francisco about whether we can just reference the general statute sections, opposed to we defining.
And I wanna know whether we still do have to have it, because there was somebody who advised us that we had to have it, but.
Right.
I don't know.
Maybe that's an under the case.
Yeah. So, we'll, we'll ask Mr. Willis whether we have to still have it.
Okay.
And if we have to have it, maybe lie the test trails on.
I just wanna say that, right? Put it up there, on a hill.
Right off the interstate, he gets some good business.
Might easy off, easy off. Oh, my god, Paul.
Okay.
I don't think everybody likes breakfast.
What did you say, were we gonna end the evening?
That little mole got me.
Oh, actually, you're picking up your phone, boy, sorry. Mine's back there, it's mine, so I was picking up yours.
I was trying to.
I was picking up my phone.
The people in the picture here, not, yeah.
It's beautiful though.
Thanks, but, okay, back to what we're trying to do here.
Boarding of horses and boat livery, let's just put those off to the side. Cause we have a lot of, boarding of horses was never defined, we have lots of boarding of horses going on in this community, and I wanna dive into that deeper. Boat livery is a new definition, I wanna dig into that deeper. Actually, building maintenance yard and business or professional office, all that.
Okay.
Business service establishment, park that one, please, I'm basically gonna be picking apart a lot of the commercial ones.
I haven't noticed.
Central air compressor, heat pump mechanicals?
What's that? No.
Central air compressor, heat pump mechanicals, Michael, are you flagging that one?
House and kind of equipment associated with building heating and air, no.
No, okay, next.
Like on the cemetery, it says burial of the dead. Well, well, that's.
Thank God.
That's out, right?
But we have this place over here where you can bury alive people.
You can bury plants there.
What zone is that in?
Commercial vehicle parking, please park that one.
So, so, can I just point out in cemetery? Established and operated by an ecclesiastical society or cemetery association. There's plenty of cemeteries in the whole line that are not operated by either one.
Right.
Correct, so do we need to modify that?
Not operated by the cemetery association?
No, they're just cemeteries that have been there forever. And mine has even more of them.
Are they active, or are they just a store?
Are they?
They can be active.
No, they are, they are.
They can be active, they can be active.
No, I meant, I meant.
Yeah, cause the residents are not.
They're dead, they're dead.
Our family has a family cemetery, it's a big one.
It's huge, yeah.
It's not owned by either one of those items.
Yeah, and, and your family doesn't have a cemetery association? I'm just asking, cause we have, we have.
No, there doesn't.
Quite a few family cemetery associations in my.
I believe that, yeah.
No, there isn't one.
Do you remember the spirit of her case from yesterday, where the woman buried her husband in that area?
Yeah, I, I closed on that property.
For the new buyers?
And I know, and the lady had died, so I didn't never meet her, but I, I represented her estate. Weird, she buried her husband on the property and, and had to be sued to take him away. But she, she never got permission, and she buried the body, it wasn't ashes, it was the body.
So we should probably just put the period after mortuary, then neither of that, huh, who they're established and operated by.
No, because people do have the ability of having family cemeteries, I, when they have sizable plots of land.
I, I, as a lawyer, I've created a couple of them.
So we just want, the, the period after mortuary is per your suggestion, is, okay.
Yeah, but no, don't we wanna change it so it's not just established and operated by?
No, we're taking out.
We're taking that language.
Oh, we're taking out that part, okay, I'm sorry, I just.
I was gonna say, eliminate that, then otherwise you could get into, you know, by family, by this, by that.
Yeah, correct.
Hey, you wanna have a cemetery?
Michael, do we want, take out burial of the dead, or are you okay with burial of the dead there?
No, I should lose that in, when they look at this twenty years.
No, the zoning commission said I could bury a live person there. It doesn't say the dead what, it just says the dead.
You mean pet cemetery?
Pet cemetery.
Okay, so as we were saying, you, you wanted to flag commercial vehicle park?
Yep, commercial vehicle parking.
Commercial nursery, is that new or not?
Oh, it's red, it's red.
I don't know, it's red, and then they dig something.
Yeah, just park that one.
I have a question on that one, cause it says indoor or outdoor raising of sale of flowers, plants, nursery stock, or berries for a commercial purpose, why not vegetables? I mean.
Exactly, it's a perfect.
Well, plants.
Or, or plants, yeah.
Plants or?
Vegetables.
Vegetables, no, you wanting, you want berries or vegetables?
Why would you say berries? Yeah, it's.
And berries.
White, white, a lot of berries, and a lot of stone fruit.
Yeah, I was gonna say, apple.
Okay.
Everyone needs one.
Yeah, it's almost nine o'clock, I can feel it.
How about this, how about this is our last page?
I'll look and see if there's, I'll look and see if there's one statewide.
Okay.
It's commercial purpose, fine, what is a commercial purpose?
Are you seeing?
It's at the end of.
The end.
You're doing this thing for a commercial purpose?
Cause it's a commercial, so.
Right, but, but what is the commercial purpose, you're gonna sell it?
You see, you want a definition for commercial purpose?
Cause it says raising or sale.
Yeah, instead of commercial, you should say for, you probably should say for, for, you know, wholesale or retail, or something like that.
Okay.
There's no zoning term defined for commercial purpose.
Cause it says indoor or outdoor raising or sale.
Yeah.
So then you have to define what commercial purpose is, and I wanna know, why can't you raise it but not sell it? Cause I'm doing it all over the place.
Then it's commercial.
Then it would be commercial.
If you're raising it but not selling it, then it's not.
I'm raising it and, and not selling it.
Then that's not a commercial nursery.
Really only, but it's an or sale, not and.
True, not both.
So it, and it forces you to find what is a commercial purpose, and it's, a commercial purpose is selling it, and we don't have to have that part in.
Whether it's retail or wholesale, you, you know, get into that.
Okay.
Community building, community realness.
Here's the, Jane, on the next page, dairy and bottling works. You go, this, on the next page is the dairy and bottling works, which you had raised when we're going through the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think it's.
Defines it as something that's very specific, and I think it's the thing that you were considering.
And I'm, I'm agreeing with Jane on this, I think using the word a commercial facility engaged in the processing, actually.
Yeah.
Because you can have a farm that sells organic, you know, natural, you know, non-pasteurized milk.
Well, then it wouldn't be included, yeah, yeah, that, that, that's what, I, I, I'm kind of okay with it, because it, it's, it's very limited in what we. If you get somebody who's coming in to do that, that's sort of industrial in nature, and you want that regulated by special program.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so we don't.
But what if you do that at your farm?
Then that's not included, it's not a commercial.
It's not commercial.
Yeah, but if you sell it, it is, and you're allowed to sell your farm products, so.
It's a commercial if you're selling it outside, and you cannot just use it for personal use.
Well, nobody has a dairy and just drinks all their own.
No, exactly, yes, exactly.
And eats all their own ice cream and does all that.
No, so that's why maybe we take out the part where it says a commercial facility? And just.
Well, is it gonna be separately regulated from a farm?
It seems like it, because it has its own definition.
Yeah, but. I mean, looking at, um.
Cause it's really.
Mark Comstock, up on one fifty-six, if he weren't selling, that would be a commercial establishment.
Yeah, but.
So, but he is selling, so does that mean it's commercial, or does it mean it's his business?
Well, it's clearly, we have a separate definition for what he's doing, and through that definition, you can have a sales area of no greater than four hundred square feet, and I get into fights with him all the time about it. But, you know, his activity has its own sort of separate category of, you grow it there and you sell it there.
Right.
And it's commercial.
Commercial is Cromwell growers that grow for wholesale distribution. That's like, that's how I look at wholesale, commercial.
Okay.
So I, I mean, maybe it's just me, that's.
That's just farming. Retail sales is connected.
That's just farm, no.
Yeah, that's, we, we, we have that, do you, my, my, my understanding of the dairy and bodily works, though, is most farmers who do sort of large-scale dairy farming have large trucks that come and siphon off their milk and bring it someplace out on the.
To pass try, I think so, yeah.
Right, and, and that's what this is really gearing toward, that we, if we had one of those facilities now, like, this is how we would regulate it.
Right.
I don't think this is really designed to catch the people who are doing this themselves on their own site, with their own cows.
I agree.
But my concern is, is that we understand that right now, but somebody in the future may not.
Okay, well.
And we can just put a part on it.
We're, we're flagging it, we'll come back to it later, okay. Next.
Farms then.
Actually, before we leave the seas, um, there's a, I think there's an omission here, uh, for cannabis establishment.
Okay.
Oh.
Oh.
It used to, it's only mentioned.
We don't allow them.
Right.
So we need to define.
No, we don't allow them at all, or.
Right, but what do you, what do you, there's no definition.
Probably should.
We don't allow, we need to say what it is we're not allowed.
Current laws refer to P A. Refer to P A twenty-one-one for the definition of cannabis establishment.
Okay, and obviously, that's now been caught a fight.
So, I think we need to go back, I think if we want, we need to, yeah.
Well, so it's banned already?
Yeah.
It's banned, but it, we don't have a definition in our new regs.
Don't worry.
So we're banning something we don't define, so.
And we still have the basic idea, if you don't say it's permitted, it's banned.
Right.
Same deal with T one, by the way.
Yes, but, 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 under, under the statutes, you had to affirmatively opt out of that provision, and therefore, we opted out by putting it in the reg, yeah, we don't allow.
There's no definition.
Similar to, similar to accessory dwellings, and a few other things that we were allowed to opt out of, because it was an affirmative opt-out, we have to put it in our regs, we're not doing this.
So, and that's probably where I.
Yeah, that's where.
That's referenced to twenty-one-one.
Yes.
Help me out on this, we had a public hearing on it.
Yep.
And then the commission voted.
Ban.
Ban, yes, but again, the, the point was.
But you're, you're talking about.
It's a legislative change.
The, the legislature said, unless you affirmatively vote to ban it.
Okay.
You have to put provisions in your regs to allow it.
Okay.
So you took the affirmative step of banning it.
Banning it, correct.
And you're allowed to do that, but what she was saying is, uh, uh, the standard rule of zoning is, if it's not allowed, it's prohibited. In this particular case, you had to take the extra step of prohibiting it, because the statute said unless you prohibit it, it will be considered allowed.
Right.
In any case, though, you didn't carry over the definition of cannabis establishment, so we should probably reinsert it here, so we all know what it is you don't allow.
Oh, right.
Okay.
And while you're at it, T room. T room.
Oh, thank you, T room, I have that notebook.
Okay. T room.
Farm stand.
Hang on, let me get to T room here.
I, I'm wondering about that, same with child, very bust out.
Open up shelter.
But it's for children.
He could be.
You can't understand what's in the range.
What, what was the T, where, where was T room come up, were you, were you referring to rooms?
Yes.
Very risky, really, really risky.
Cause I had to look.
All kinds of stuff goes on in that.
Somebody who owned a coffee house did not want.
Some adult.
No problem. And they were on the zoning mission at the time, so.
Probably.
The T room is my kind of adult.
Now I know what to get you.
There was a definition of T room, now there's starting to be different, different definitions of T room.
I know what to get you for Christmas, green tea. Um, farm stand?
Just because that'd be interesting.
Okay.
As we're kinda on the subject, how do we keep our hookah lounges?
Well.
Hooker lounges?
Hookah, hookah.
That's a good point.
Who's mind is, where's your mind?
Okay, again, the point on that is, unless it is affirmatively allowed, it is considered prohibited. Again, the cannabis one is an exception, because the statute specifically said you have to take the affirmative.
Every weekend, the hookah lounge, grab, I just.
Oh.
Meanwhile, it is eight fifty-eight, folks.
All right, so let's finish this page.
I see with your words.
Farm stand, I'd like you to park farm stand, cause it's a new definition, and I don't like how it says a temporary roadside stand. There's farm stands that are permanent.
And what, therefore?
I just don't think calling it.
So just get rid of temporary?
How about, how about, how about the word temporary?
A roadside stand.
I think.
Well, I think.
I think you're.
Yeah, you're getting rid of temporary.
Why don't just cancel the word temporary? Is that?
Yes.
Be careful. I don't know, because it could turn into something.
No, no, I think that there's a reason why farm stand says temporary, because you're allowed to do it if it's temporary, but you're not allowed to do it unless it's part of a farm.
Maybe like Four Mile River Farm, for instance.
Yeah, but that's on their farm.
Yeah, but the cattle is on their farm. Cattle's our farm, they don't raise the cattle on the Four Mile River Farm.[1627.94]